Bid awards, 2017 Chip Seal Program, project number 2017-502-1.
Okay, you should have on your computer the bid tab for this. Does anybody need a hard copy of that?
Nope.
Okay. We opened bids last week. Vance Brothers is the low, quite a bit lower than Missouri Petroleum. We did a little checking on them. I don't think, if they have done work for us directly, it's been awhile. They did sub some work with Jefferson Asphalt a few years ago for us. They're a very good chip seal company. We just, they've never gotten our bid that I'm aware of. Larry, can you confirm that or not? Okay. They subbed some work, but a very good company. Their bid was quite a bit cheaper. We were a little concerned about that. Cliff contacted them and talked to them a few times and got some further information. Everything checks out. They're just, their bid's just really cheap. So, it's a, it's a good deal for us in the long run. And we would recommend award to them. Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $277,370.73. Is any questions?
Nope, I just saw a lot lower. If you all contacted them to verify that that, if somebody didn't forget to carry the one or something, then we're good to go. As long as they stand by it, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. These chip seal work. It fluctuates a lot that we've seen over the past few years. These contractors chase it around the state and they go after it. If they want it real bad, they, they give us a low number. And Missouri Petroleum has been very low in recent years and always does good work for us. But their price is really low this year too, but Vance beat them by quite a bit. So, we have inspectors out there. We check things. We certify that the oil is good, check the rock. I mean, we're out there checking to make sure it's done right. So, we don't see any issue on that end of it. We're getting a good price and this in the end will, will be good. It will allow us some additional money to end that overlay and pavement budget to do some, some concrete street replacement work that we were a little concerned about not having the funds to do based on what we were looking at estimate, our estimates. So, I think it's a good deal for us in the end.
Did they get the state bid too?
Um, don't know. The state, they bid stuff all over. This company is, is based out of Kansas City, but they're all over the Midwest. They got about five or six different locations. Headquarters is Kansas City. Like I said, they're one of the best in, in the area along with Missouri Petroleum. So, either one of those was going to be fine with us just with the price being so low. We were just generally a little concerned about it, but everything I think is good and we want to go with this. So.
Looking to add any more chip seal to it or?
Um, we always have the ability to do that, to change order stuff. I, I don't like to get to adding too much just because it kind of, I don't know. We can do what we want. We, we'll look at it. We got some, that's a good point, Chris. And we got some that we kind of had to hold off based on what our estimates were. And with it be a little cheaper, we might be able to fill some more in there. So, we'll talk.
We probably have more issues with concrete than you.
Yeah.
You got a contract to sign or?
Yep.
Just an award.
Um, award and signature. Sam's got it.
Yep.
Did you all sign your review?
No, but it's here.
It's the same normal.
I move that we sign a contract with Vance Brothers Construction for the 2017 Chip Seal Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017 Asphalt Overlay Program, project number 2017-501-1.
Okay, we opened bids again last week on the asphalt overlay projects. And the low bidder is Higgins Asphalt. They did our contract last year and did, did good work overall. They're a little bit, well, they were new to us last year, not new to the area. They've done work around, but we had never used them as a contractor and we were, we were happy with what they did last year for us. And so, we would again, we would recommend award to them again this year in the amount The, their bid along with Jefferson Asphalt was quite a bit lower than what our estimate was. And the city opened their, their bid on asphalt about two weeks ago and we were a little concerned with their price. Their price was about $76 a ton. And so, we estimated on the high side because of that, not knowing where things would, would come in. And obviously, our price was quite a bit less. So, I think really the, the main reason why it was so much less is we have longer poles. Theirs is typically kind of choppy throughout town and the way they structure theirs, it's not as conducive to getting a good quantity, good amount of quantity down in a short amount of time. So, generally, we track a little bit lower than the city, but not that much lower. So, that, that was the reason why our estimate was so high. Again, with this being quite a bit less than our estimate, it allows additional money freed up in the budget to be able to do some concrete street repairs primarily in the Willmore Sleepy Hollow Estate subdivision would be the main one that we'd like to do. So, we would recommend award to Higgins Asphalt in that amount that I stated earlier. Is there any questions?
Nope. We paid you for that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was initial that I saw.
On that first motion, if you guys, I know you need a motion to sign, but maybe award it and sign it at the same time. Got last one. Two different motions, maybe to award the first and then the second.
I thought he said to award and to sign the contract.
I said to sign, but.
Oh, okay.
Why do we need to award it if we're signing the contract?
Maybe we don't. I was just used to doing that one.
I mean, sometimes we award one week and then we sign the contract the next. It don't matter to me.
It don't matter. I just noticed that we didn't.
Yeah, we, I don't know. We've just historically done it that way, but.
I move that we award and sign the contract with Higgins Asphalt Paving for the 2017 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I add something just on both of those? We did allow the small communities to bid with us. There's five of the seven that did, two on the chip seal and three on the asphalt. Pretty good. This year, you know, we went through some changes on what we'll do and not do for the communities and got a pretty good system in place. Kind of started this year kind of a trial and I think we'll just refine that over the next few years. But where we kind of put it on them to get us information, we help them a little bit as we can, but kind of put it on them to make the decisions on what they want to do rather than us doing it for them. So, except there's quite a bit of work in, in those five communities as part of these contracts.
So, assume that $25,000 comes out of their portion of the sales tax and then they pay the rest?
Um, the.
Or $20,000 actually?
On the asphalt, if you look, those numbers are higher than $100,000. If you remember from last year, we had a couple of communities that we were kind of getting toward the end. They couldn't decide what they want to do and we said we held some money over from the last sales tax, carried it forward to this year and allowed them to spend that this year and also any additional they got, you know, in the new sales tax. So, that's, that's why Center Town is, is quite a bit higher. They actually have 200 or give or take a little less because they spent a little bit out of the previous sales tax. So, they have the funding to cover it. City of Taos will have to reimburse us that amount. And they're going to either, either they reimburse us or they pay directly to the contractor on it. And then the others, it's all within their allotted funding.
So, basically, they're spending their five-year allotment at one time?
Yeah. And we, you know, go through with them, make sure they know what they're doing and give them the opportunity to change their mind after its bid in which they had that opportunity, they said go for it. So.
Good.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. In the unfinished business. New business accounts payable review?
There is none.
Wow. Okay. Collector to present 2016 Annual Settlement. Stretch it out Larry, because we got till 10:30.
We got plenty of work to do, don't we? I feel like you have to accommodate that. If you're going to do it, tell some good jokes or something.
Man walked into a bar with a monkey on his shoulder. Okay.
Keep going.
He said, "Good day."
Don't stop now. Sound like a good one.
Yeah. Dave's Tavern.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, presenting my 2016 Annual Settlement. Just a brief wrap-up of it. For the 2016 tax year, we collected and distributed $71,389,796. That was about a $2 million, a little over $2 million increase from last year. We currently collected, this, this last year, we collected 97.5% of the current year taxes that were owed. We collected a little over 2.1 million in delinquent taxes, which is about a 70% rate of collection for delinquent taxes each year. And of the amount, we collected 52.6 million goes to school districts, 5.3 million goes to cities and municipalities, 3.9 million goes to the road district, and 2.7 million goes to Missouri River Regional Library. If you look at the front page of the farm, we're, we're actually $3 off. We have $3 more on the credit side than we had on the charges side. We haven't been able to find that $3 area yet, but are still looking for it. And we'll probably submit a revised report once that is found. So, I'm asking for your all's approval. If you approve it, then it'll go to the clerk to sign and put his seal on and that will wrap up our 2016 tax year. We have a large amount in protested taxes, a little, a little over 2.6 million. Most all of that is Amarin's protest. This is the fourth year in a row that we're holding money from it in our protest account.
What percent of your collections goes to the service department?
Uh. How'd I put that? It's on here somewhere.
Service on the left side of the front page, $97,489.
I don't know what percentage that is. I guess if, out of 77 million, it's less than 1%? Or a little over 1% maybe?
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we accept the Collector's Annual Settlement for 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks Larry.
Thank you.
Mo Perm report on annual actual analysis for Cole County.
As you know, Mo Perm is a self-insured fund that was set up in the eighties for the Missouri, from the Missouri Association of Counties and Missouri Municipalities. It's called a shared risk pool. It's different than any other insurance out there in the market. You could think of it as a self-insured fund versus fully insured. What they do is at the end of their year, they come up with how much is due back to their clients that they deal with if they have a good year. So, we're receiving a check of $11,368.92 back to the county. So, which is very nice. It's the risk pool for all of their entities and I think they have over 900 public entities within their insurance.
We typically see a refund every year.
Yes, we do. I think they vary in amounts. I've seen it in the twenties, thirties to the eight thousands.
That's good.
Yep. And that's it. Just wanted to present.
Signing of Zucker Change Order for mapping mobile, mapping software.
This was actually, you guys discussed this back in February, just a discussion of this purchase. And then in the minutes in March, you approved the sole source on this agreement. And if I correct some wrong, Jerry, but whatever they planned to do didn't quite meet with GIS and their needs. So, they actually changed that as the way, what we order to meet GIS needs. So, then they sent up a change order with terms and conditions on it. So, Lynn didn't really actually have this in the minutes that you signed this agreement. So, that's all I'm doing is making sure it gets, so she has something to attach it to in the minutes. So, if you guys would just agree to sign this again, that would be great. I don't know, I mean, you tell us what procedure, but if she doesn't really have something to attach it to, then I don't know how we'd ever find this back. If that makes sense. So, is there anything different about it that you want to tell them about?
This should have been sent originally when we approved the purchase order for the AVL and they just, they didn't send it. So, we should have done it all that day. So, this is kind of after the fact. That's all it is. The PO has already been generated.
Yeah, there's probably a PO behind it.
PO generated for the original contract, but this is the change order.
The PO is generated for the change order, the AVL. This is just their work order, their scope of work, what they're doing for that money.
And I'm assuming we didn't only sign terms and conditions one on the first one then?
Yeah. Yeah. First contract's done. This is just the scope of work for the AVL is all it is.
Well, we don't have a contract.
Was the initial one in January? The software?
Yes, that's the CAD.
I mean, don't we have an initial software?
Yes, yes, we do. We do. John did that. That's for the CAD, the 75 or 95, whatever it was, thousand for the CAD.
But then their GIS or our GIS didn't.
It wasn't going to.
Bidding with them, so we had to redo some stuff.
Yeah, right.
But we never did approve that contract part of it, did we?
I'm not, I'm not sure that the contract was, the contract wasn't approved because this is the contract, but the, the money was approved and allocated and we were told to go ahead. That's where the PO is generated.
Didn't, I mean, was it going to cost us a little extra or something? So, we had to approve something to approve payment, but I don't know if we ever actually.
Right. This, this was the $29,800 that was approved for the, from the sole source bid to attach to the original contract.
And those minutes are attached to that?
They just never sent the change order through. We've got the purchase order, everything's done. They've been working on it. They just discovered this last week that we had never signed a change order for the actual scope of work. So, they sent it last week.
So, who's the agreement with then, with Zercher?
I'm glad you have a hard time too.
I mean, we approved moving on with it. We just never approved the contract for the extra $29,800. Because I remember they were giving us a deal on it.
Right.
Deal after they, it should have worked in the first place. So. I don't remember the exact discussion we had about it back then, but I mean, we, we did agree to move on with it. Dave, any bigger office back here? My filing system is jacked up. Everything's filed under M for miscellaneous at this point. I mean, I remember approving, moved, moved ahead with it and we got the minutes there. So, I guess we just have to approve the contract for that amount?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Are they about done with that, Derek?
They're actually on site today. I'm headed back there, here today and tomorrow doing the software programming and actually building it. All the hardware's in place, the servers and racks and all that. We're actually inputting all the data right now, the next two days. The tentative go-live is June 15. Which is two months ahead of schedule.
I think we've had good luck with them.
Yeah.
Aside from the GIS stuff not working. So, and I'm, I'm fine with them. I don't know if you got anything else you worried about with it, Chris? Or Sam?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I guess we already approved it. I move that we award or sign the contract with Zercher for the mobile mapping software.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Take that please. Second question.
And those two. Okay.
And recess or we pick up other matters?
Housekeeping, house cleaning? I got a couple letters from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. St. Francis Xavier Catholic Church has been officially entered in the National Register of Historic Places. And the Garnet Forum Historic District in Center Town has also been entered in the National Register of Historic Places. So, it's the only correspondence I've got. Do they want to stand in recess till 10:30?
Sure.
Got a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was fun.
You got that email that I sent you about the share?
Okay. Call a meeting back to order. It's Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017. Opened it up for a public hearing on the Randall Drive NID. Is there anybody here?
Do you want me to talk about it first?
Okay.
Do I need to?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah, it doesn't amplify it, just recording it.
I was thinking, it's a small room, but.
Singing.
Okay. I'm Tony Stegeman with Gilmore &amp; Bell and we're serving as bond counsel to the county with respect to the neighborhood improvement district formation and ultimately the financing. So, the hearing that you're holding is required by state law. Notice had been sent by mail to all of the property owners in the area affected as well as a notice was published in the newspaper. And what, what we're doing today is deciding whether to move forward with the improvements. The plans and specs have been complete, as you know. The project has actually been bid out, so I'm going to let Eric or Larry talk about that. And, and you know, if you should decide to move forward after this hearing and, and hearing the bids, then the next thing you'll do is to approve an order directing the improvements to be made. So, that's the next step in the process. Once the improvements are completed, you know, in the fall, then we will know all the final costs. We will start working with Joy Howard at WM Financial as the financial advisor to structure the long-term financing. And then, once the long-term bonds are sold, we're going to know what that assessment will be. And so, the goal is to get all of that done so that the first year of assessment can be on the tax bills this year. So, I'm going to let, who, who's going to talk about the bids here?
Okay. I can talk about the project. Bartlett &amp; West Engineering was the consultant that did the design work on it. And the original estimate, and I don't have the actual original estimate, but it was in the amount of about $336,000. Through, through the design process, we encountered some things, driveways and getting parking lots and things like that to match in properly without causing too much problem with ingress and egress. The price did raise a little bit to, I think about $358,000 for the estimated price at the time we were getting ready to bid it. And we opened bids last week and actually they came in very good with the low bid. Stockman Construction is the, the low bidder in the amount of $288,576,000 or, and 28 cents. And the bid is quite a bit lower than the next low. There's quite about, quite a bit of money on the table, about $70,000. You know, it's always something to be concerned about. So, I did speak with the owner of the contractor, Stockman Construction, and talked to him about it. And they are a reputable company in town. And you know, obviously, they weren't happy with their, with it being that much lower, but they will stand by that and they will do the project. So, it's a good project from everybody's standpoint and we would, when we get to the point of recommending award, we will do that. So, is there any questions about the actual project itself? Go ahead.
I suggest that you, I guess, invite if there are any property owners who want to speak about the, the project or ask questions.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak?
If you'd like to.
Anybody or everybody or?
Yeah, right.
Microphone just records, so.
Okay. My name's Darren Patterson with P&amp;T Management. I had some concerns over cost assessment because it didn't look like any of the homes that use this road every day were going to be.
And then, once the long-term bonds are sold, we're gonna know what that assessment will be. And so, the goal is to get all of that done, so that the first year of assessment can be on the tax bills this year. So, I'm gonna let, who's gonna talk about the bids here?
I can talk about the project. Bartlett &amp; West Engineering was the consultant that did the design work on it. And the original estimate, and I don't have the actual original estimate, but it was in the amount of about $336,000. Through, through the design process, we encountered some things, driveways and getting parking lots and things like that to match in properly without causing too much problem with ingress and egress. The price did raise a little bit to, I think about $358,000 for the estimated price at the time we were getting ready to bid it. And we opened bids last week, and actually, they came in very good with the low bid. Stockman Construction is the, the low bidder in the amount of $288,576,000 or, and 28 cents. And the bid is quite a bit lower than the next low. There's quite about, quite a bit of money on the table, about $70,000. You know, it's always something to be concerned about, so I did speak with the owner of the contractor, Stockman Construction, and talked to him about it. And they are a reputable company in town. And, you know, obviously, they weren't happy with their, with it being that much lower, but they will stand by that and they will do the project. So, it's a good project from everybody's standpoint, and we would, when we get to the point of recommending an award, we will do that. So, is there any questions about the actual project itself?
I suggest that you, I guess, invite if there are any property owners who want to speak about the, the project or ask questions.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak?
If you'd like to. Anybody or everybody or? Microphone just record, so.
My name's Darren Patterson with P&amp;T Management. I had some concerns over cost assessment. It didn't look like any of the homes that use this road every day were going to be assessed any of the costs on it. Is that accurate?
There's, there's three homes actually that would be.
Oh, that's right, there at the end.
Actually eight homes beyond, beyond the map.
There's 12 mailboxes, so I'm gonna guess 12 people live past the 980 feet. Why aren't they being assessed?
As I recall, the pavement is not going.
But drive over it every day and get benefit from it, right?
They have the most to gain now. The valuation, their homes are gonna go up a lot more than what some of these rental properties are gonna go up, which basically is off of income, which isn't gonna change because of this road being replaced. All these really nice homes at the end of it are gonna gain substantially out of this. And they're not involved with the cost. It does not seem fair whatsoever, in my opinion.
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
So legally, the property that can be assessed, it's only the property that's within the boundaries of the Neighborhood Improvement District. And when the petition was drawn up, it was only for the properties that were going to touch the improvement of the road. And the properties beyond that, while they may benefit in some respects, they don't benefit as much as the properties that actually touch the improvement. And so, there's no requirement legally that absolutely every property that might benefit be included within the boundaries. The boundaries of the NID were drawn, and then the, the assessment is based upon the benefit to those properties.
Is there a way to change it to where they would be included into the?
Now, without starting again?
Making a toll road? There's a lot of roads like that. Those people are gonna use. You don't get to charge everybody using them though. I'm trying to find a map yet with all that. Did you have it?
I don't have a map because GIS doesn't work.
Well, it seems as though the original petition should have been through to that group.
But it's not that road.
They drive that road. That's where every resident.
I drive it, but I live in Orangeville. You're not gonna be able to assess me for it.
But they have property that's at that road, on that road.
But they're not on that road.
They're on that road. They're just further down that road.
It's all Randall Drive.
They have no way to their home without using this road.
I'm still trying to find a map here, so I apologize.
May I ask who initiated this?
The petition was originally initiated by property owners.
By property owners within this map?
Are they here?
I did talk to most of the property owners. I was not able to get ahold of all of them. We had enough to sign the petition, enough to move forward with the NID, if I'm recalling that correctly. And that's, you know, like I say, I wasn't able to get ahold of all of the property owners, to talk with them. So, this concern came up with a lot of people. It was a concern of ours. It was, literally, it was a complaint of ours, really. But the way the law reads, I believe, there was nothing we could do about it, so.
Well, my understanding was that there was no desire to extend the paved road beyond what you're doing.
There was no desire from any property owners down the line to be a part of the NID, so.
But yet, they travel on this road as a means of their residence, that's property on this. So, we limited the range to an area where we get enough people to sign the petition.
I'm going off memory, because this, I forget when this went through, like, was it a year ago?
Let me see that, Jeff.
GIS is back up.
Petition was signed, turned in probably. It hasn't been that long.
Right. What was the date of that?
That is June the 3rd, 2016.
Okay. So, the, the final petition was submitted just prior to that?
I know, I visited several of the property owners on the gal, and none of them were willing to be included or wanted to help them.
They, they were building buildings, so they wouldn't make this, okay.
So, it would have halted any of the repairs, any of the replacements, basically, as, as far as giving it into the county. Because our goal, I mean, I'll be honest, we own several of the properties that are included in this, and our goal, ultimate goal, is to get it up to par in county's name, at that point. So, that was, that was our end goal.
And how many properties do you have?
I think 10 buildings.
10 buildings. So, so you make up close to the majority of this little mapped area? And that was strategically limited to a space that did not include additional residents down the street?
Not on purpose. It was just to where the concrete ends at this time. That's, that's how the boundaries were drawn up, I believe, so. Like I say, we, we would have personally liked to have seen everybody on the street involved on it, but it was proving to be very difficult. Honestly, on my part, I've been working on this for about four years. That's, that's kinda where we were at with it. We just, our end goal, if you have property or live on the street, then you know how bad the street is. Us and one other property management company are really the only ones that pay for any storm removal or anything.
Yeah. So, so for the record, this is, this originates from, from, I guess, the county not holding the original developer to the codes? So, we have a subdivision that was installed?
There's no requirement.
They didn't do it at all.
Somebody built it on their own and put it private.
There's no requirement that the county, they have to build it to our standards. We have no, no authority to, to require them to do it. The only thing that we have the ability to do is say yes or no, we accept the roads into the system. It never was built to standards, you know, and that's why it never was accepted into the county road system.
So, if they don't build them into standards, do they, are they forced to do some sort of association?
No, under present law, no. It's left up to the landowners to maintain. We have streets, paved streets, several of them throughout the county that never was built to county standards, and they're maintained by whoever lives there, so.
So, so the other, the other thing that I had in question was, the cost was allocated based on street frontage, which I, I would argue, that's not necessarily a fair representation of road usage. You have, you have single-family houses that are probably, probably have a similar square foot, square, square frontage of roads that some of the units that have like 18 units. And clearly, those with 18 units have a lot more road traffic and usage, and they're gonna be allocated a similar cost as a single-family home. Is that how this is normally done, or is this?
Under the statute, the statute has a, it states that the assessment can be allocated by front footage or other reasonable methods of assessment, so that the property is fairly assessed. So, there are lots of ways that would be legally supportable. This one is specifically mentioned by statute. That's why we used this one.
It says can, but not shall, so you don't have to use that method?
We didn't have to, but at this point, whatever's in the petition is what has to be followed.
So, you would say by number of occupants? I would say by further, further in, the, the folks at the 980th feet. If you're not gonna, if you're gonna exclude the homeowners, then let's say the people, property owner at foot 980 use more of that road, and I have a stake in that, because I have the first house in on the corner. I use this much of it. And yeah, I plow it. I plow it. I have my people plow the snow off of it. So, yeah, I do maintain that, and I'm gonna pay for that. That really isn't fair. Especially excluding those folks on the end, which does sound somewhat strategic. You leave them out because they would have voted no? I'm not feeling that.
You derive a bunch of benefit to it. We argue these on everyone on, how you're gonna do it, street frontage, amount of properties you own, how much of a vote. So then, your vote should carry less weight if you use less weight of that road did. So maybe the people at the end use more of the road, and maybe they use 90% of the road, so 90% of their vote should count. You use 8% of the road, maybe only 8% of your vote should count. I know it's weird saying 8% of your vote, but then you shouldn't carry as much weight if you're not using as much of the road.
Or as much cost then either, right?
So, don't think, you're driving benefit from it too. I mean, there's, there's several ways to look at it. I don't disagree with you. I'm just arguing both sides.
No, and that's what.
So, if we don't want to do this, then let's just end the hearing and be done with it. I've, we've been through enough of these before where people argue about how to do it. I don't wanna sit through that part of it. If we don't wanna do it, let's not do it. If we wanna do it, let's do it. That's just, that's where I'm at with it. I don't have a lot of patience for these things. I don't even like the NIDs, because we're having headaches with them anyway. I think this is a way for us to help you all fix the road, get the county to take it over, and then y'all basically don't have to mess with it anymore, so. But how y'all derive who's gonna pay for it was up to the home association or whatever. We really don't have any stake in that. We can give y'all guidance and provide you with materials and information, but we can't make y'all do it one way or the other. And one way to do it is the people that use more of the road, they pay more. That would be entirely up to the home association. Or if you have, you know, six properties or acreage, so. I don't know. I just don't wanna sit here all day and talk about this, because I, I kinda thought this was a done deal. We just had to have an informal hearing to approve this stuff, so. I don't know where y'all are at with it. I hadn't heard anything about this up until this point.
Yeah.
As far as anybody being against it, so.
Tony, does the petition currently say that it's by frontage?
Yes.
So, to redo it at this point would have to be a new petition?
That's correct. The advantage of the Neighborhood Improvement District, just for anybody who doesn't know this, is that not only does the county agree to take the road in, but it enables the costs of the road to be spread out over 20 years. And the assessments against the properties are, are then over a 20-year period, if you choose to do that. I mean, clearly, everyone will be given an option to just prepay upfront without any further interest, but. So, that, that is one of the distinct advantages of using the Neighborhood Improvement District as a method for, for getting these improvements done. So, that's one thing I just wanted to throw out there, but.
Yeah, the petition was presented to us. We don't go out and look for roads that we wanna take over, you know, just because we're, we wanna take them over. But you are going to get much better roads, and we're gonna maintain them, so you are gonna get some benefit from this.
I personally would like to see if we're gonna do all of it, or part of it, do all of it. I don't, I don't disagree with that. But then you got that much more headache. They own three acres, eight acres, 10 acres. How much do they have to pay? They use that much more of the road. Probably biting off this smaller portion of it made it easier to deal and to disperse the, whatever amounts you'd have to pay on it, so.
Well, this is the same argument as we talk about paving gravel roads and upgrading gravel roads and going all the way to the end of the road to the last mailbox. And, you know, that's, that's not a practice that I like to see, is because, you know, then somebody builds a, the road further and then they want you to pave it. So, I just don't agree with that. But, I mean, obviously, if there's people that are against this, I mean, you know, that comes into play too. I mean, I don't, do we have who was for and who was against, or just the people that find it up for the petition, or? I haven't seen that.
It, it's on file. I, I don't have it with me. The petition?
I mean, obviously, I guess if you guys are against this, or?
Clearly against it, absolutely.
Or you're against the assessment of?
I don't think it was done right. First of all, if we're gonna do this, it is gonna be everybody that benefits. And to pick on just these gen, uh, revenue generating units, or whatever you wanna call this, is clearly unfair.
My understanding was that the properties further from the edge of the pavement were absolutely not going to sign the petition, right?
So, again, you exclude them because they were gonna be a no vote, and your petition went past. That's kinda self-serving, isn't it?
Well, I mean, I think we're gonna get to the same place. So either you have no project because you couldn't get enough people to sign a petition for, to pull in those homeowners, or you, you decide not to continue with the project.
I'm for either one of those.
So.
For us, I mean, something has to be done with the street. So, it was either try to get ahold of everybody and somehow share the costs, have a week, you know, or, or do this. And, and exploring everything. Like I said, I've spent quite a lot of time just this. I don't, I don't think, I haven't met any of you guys. I've, I've tried to contact everybody on the street many, multiple times. I don't know who all signed the petition. There was enough to sign the petition. I, I know that I did try to contact everybody.
How, how people signed. You're 10 of them, so that makes two out of you.
I don't think it exactly works quite like that, but.
The sufficiency of the petition is based upon square footage, so area of property. And the, the law requires two-thirds by area.
So he has two-thirds just sitting there?
I don't know.
Yeah, he has 10 properties. Isn't that what you said?
But they're all on smaller acreage too.
Well, it's just math. I mean, come on. Seriously, you have, you have a two-thirds vote sitting there. So what chance do we have? Just because you want it, it passes. I clearly don't see the honesty in that. That doesn't seem fair at all.
Honestly, you could be right. I don't remember.
I kinda feel like I am right, and I think by the silencers, I've probably got a lot of agreement here.
I know that it was close, but I don't remember if it was under her.
Do we have a list of all the owners and properties?
I'm going through the list right now.
I mean, because I don't have, I don't know, I just, this here, is this what you emailed us? I don't have a map on it, or that was attached. Because I mean, this is.
I got the original petition. It's going to, about to be signed.
Dan, did you guys have anything you wanna say, or?
Well, I would, I will say my personal opinion, but I'm not the true property owner, and so I would have to discuss this a little bit more with the property owner. But the thing about it is, is this is, this was to redo the current paved area. All of the maintenance is, I mean, snow, snow removal. Shrimp goes in and has, does a lot of that, pay for that. We've been paying for this for a long time. The property owners for a lot of years there. In our opinion, I think the idea is to improve what is existing, so that then the county maintains it. Because we're paying for it as it is. And our idea is, or our opinion is, that hopefully down the road, it costs us less. So I live currently, personally, live on a road that we paved years ago, and we had, in the middle of the road, we had a, we had a neighbor that chose not to buck up for the project. And we did it anyway. And, and to see what it's done for our neighborhood and done for our, our homes and our values and all, it was well worth it. I mean, I understand your point of view. It's not necessarily the way I see it. And, and again, I'm, I'm in favor of it because it's a paved section of the street that is, it's a mess now. And for those properties to ever be worth any more, we gotta start with that street. And we gotta have curbs, and we gotta have, and then we gotta have, and then I, I think, you know, Shrimp does a great job, and I think that the county will do a better job of maintaining what we have. So that's my opinion. I will have to check to make sure I'm correct on all that with the actual property owner.
So it was attached to the orders, what the map was attached to, it's got all the names.
I mean, I, obviously I understand your guys' opinion on, on where you're coming from. But when we drop this today, I don't think that we'll bring it back. I mean, we've been working on this for I don't know how many years, multiple years, but I mean, if we don't go forward with this, the road is kind of yours to, to fix, to do what you want with it. I mean, it'll stay private for, probably forever. So, I mean, I don't mean to speak for public works, but I mean, you know, the road was a piece of crap when it was put in, and the developer developed all the stuff. And we got the same thing going on in other parts of the county. I mean, you know, people want us to take the road, well, build it to our specs. And then they don't build it to our specs, and then they want us to take the road and maintain it and repair it and everything else. Well, that's, that comes at a huge cost. So, you know, I, I see both sides. I mean, maybe, maybe your maintenance cost isn't that much right now. And it probably isn't because you're getting the snow removal pushed. But what's your cost gonna be to get the road fixed? I mean, $300,000. And that's just, that's just to get it fixed. That doesn't maintain it for years to come. I mean, that, that concrete street's probably got a 20-year life before we gotta do other stuff. And we got stormwater issues everywhere now, and so stormwater becomes an issue there too. And so I don't think there's any inlets or anything in there right now, is there?
Uh, one.
Yep.
And it all dumps through one property or between two of us?
Can I ask how much we already spent and gets to this far?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna bring that up. Tony, what's the repercussion of not going forward with it? How much money has been spent and how does that get paid?
Um, I think you've just spent your engineering, right? Which the last number you gave me was $48,000.
I think it's actually come in a little bit on here, so let's say 40, just for...
Yeah.
Okay.
The county will just have to pay it. You'll just, you'll have to pay off the note.
What was the estimated annual assessment on the last NID that we did? Do you recall? What was annually? Or over the 20-year period?
The estimates are on the spreadsheet up here.
You have another copy of this? Can we do copies of this on that one out here? Debbie, can we make copies of this out here?
I'm not working on all of that.
So many of the properties, I recall, were in the 2000 range. That's if they don't repay it in a price that's out there.
It's anywhere from 6,000 to 30,000. You said the ones you circled on there had signed the petition?
Yes.
So there were 17 total that signed? Am I adding my math correct?
No, there were 17.
10 signed out of 17?
10 signed, yeah.
Yeah, 10 signed.
That's like 60%. But I thought you said you needed two-thirds?
Well, two-thirds by area. So you, you have to know the, the acreage of each...
Oh my God, Debbie, can you hold that sock?
The, you want this one back? You want it to have the acreage of each?
No, I've not done this yet in a meeting.
You have 12?
I can read it now, though, so it's not funny. Okay, so 10 out of 17, but it's based on the frontal or area, actual area. Now she's talking, Steve. It's area, right? It's not frontage?
Well, some of them, we had to...
So all these on the sheet, signed in favor, or...
The ones who I circled, those are the ones who signed. So the ones I circled, signed. First one did not.
Okay.
And then...
Oh, this ain't a copy of what I gave you, is it?
That's how you calculate sufficiency, you know, the two thirds.
Well, the one I gave you hadn't circled.
Okay.
That's the one, that's Chris has that.
I know, that's the one I was trying to get copies of. I don't know, this just, that's getting down to the each part of it. We're just supposed to do the approval. We can, I don't know, can we extend a hearing and let them work their way through it and figure out if they're gonna figure something out or if we're just gonna punt?
Eric, how long are your prices gonna be on your bid?
Well, I mean, it, I don't think we want to wait around too long because if we wait too long, then we can't get done by the completion date, which pushes it another year for actually assessing the properties. So really, you know, if we don't award the project within a month, we may as well not do it at all. It's not so much how the price is good. That's what I'm saying.
So you, you gentlemen just want to leave everything the way it is?
I don't disagree with the, the concept of getting it to the point where it needs, where it meets the code of the county so that they'll take it over. I understand and agree with that concept, but the way you put together the, the list, okay, if my property goes up 5% in value because of this wonderful road that is, and the guy down on the gravel's goes up 20% because he's, he's benefiting from the same road, why isn't he paying part of this? Those people on the gravel are benefiting. I counted 12 mailboxes. And that's not to mention undeveloped property of people that just own property and haven't developed yet. So that's at least another 12 wallets you could've tapped into to decide whether, if it's gonna go. And I think, I think, I mean, I'm not irrational, I, I understand that. Get it to the county standards, you take it over, I get that. But how you pick the, the list, no, no, not just us. Get everybody, all or nothing.
Another thing with that, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the gravel was included, that road also had to be brought up to county specs with pavement. So it would've raised the total cost. Again, they would be benefiting, but it would still have raised the total cost of the project up more.
That is definitely something that would look at and compare to. And when it came down to it, like Gary had said, and everybody had said, the people on the gravel part, they said they were fine leaving it as gravel, okay? And by plaid, platted area, you know, it was determined that we could only do that platted area, and that was actually the paved area. And it was determined just in group what's paved currently.
No, I know how you did it, but you should, but still, who pays for it? Has to include everybody that benefits. And those people on gravel benefit. They don't have another road, they can't go out the back door and say, well, that's not our road, we didn't pay for it, we won't pay for it. No, you benefit every day. They should've been included.
Legally, I don't think that can happen.
You can't include them unless you're also going to extend the paved road to touch their properties.
We should be able to block it off and let them find their own entrance there. Well, I mean, come on.
That's not realistic.
That's the other extreme, but come on, really? They just get to pass something.
Well, then you should be able to landlock people if you don't like them. You know, sell them some land and landlock them. I, I see where you're coming from, but there's...
I hope so, I mean, I'm trying to be, trying to be as clear as I can.
Well, it's clear, but I mean, it doesn't make sense to block the road off. You can't do that.
I know, that was an extreme example.
They're gonna still use the road, lots of people use the roads, but if you're gonna extend the road and fix all of it to the very end, and it's gonna increase the cost so much on your end of it, it doesn't make sense either, so. I see both sides of it. I'm not gonna sit here all day and watch it. It's like a tennis match right now. And I don't even like tennis, so. I mean, what do we need to do? Do we need to extend the hearing and look more into it? Maybe try to find a different way or get some way that there's a compromise possibly? We didn't pick the per-footage or by area, so. I know when you say that, I, I was assuming that the home association had kind of come together and, you know, made a compromise, and the best compromise is when nobody's happy. So whatever y'all need to do, we want to work with you and try to fix the problem. Otherwise, we punt it. I'm not gonna make anybody do it.
So, so, the petitioners, the people that signed the petition represent how much of footage of the road in favor of?
I counted 10 out of 17 owners, but it's not by area, so...
Just, just the, the curb, the paved portion?
I don't know by portion.
Because that's what we're doing, right? We're just doing the paved portion, so...
Right.
Yeah, 10 out of those 17 signed it. But I don't know what percentage of the area they own, a percentage of the curb frontage they own. I don't know how all that, there's so many ways to figure it.
Right.
And so, I mean, I understand where this gentleman's coming from, like, well, I don't want to be paying the same as somebody at the end who's benefiting more, and so, I mean, I understand it, but at some point...
Pay for the snow removal for the people at the end of the road.
I'd be trying to get rid of it, yeah. Hey, county, take it over, great. Let government take care of it, I love it. You don't have to worry about it, you know, it's a little bit every year, but your snow removal, and then eventually you're gonna have to redo that whole road. It's concrete, right?
Yeah.
And that's gonna be even more expensive than just, you know, putting chip sealers, asphalt in it.
The actual improvement is asphalt.
So, but I mean, to do it, you'd have to tear it all out, and you're gonna eventually have that cost anyway. Now you have, you got an opportunity to put it on to a 20-year payment, property payment.
So the properties that's signed up are predominantly these. Which are the ones that Gary...
Right, yeah. I mean, I understand where they're coming from. I figured it was probably most of the, them and rentals, I had duplexes, so...
I have four flexes. The, the largest one, I think, has seven units of, I'm sorry, nine units. That's the largest, everything else is four flexes.
Is it possible for us to, for us to go back and try to compromise on, on this and some of that?
That's what I would see if we could do that. I mean, we needed, time is of the essence here, though, because we've got...
You won't be able to finish your project this year if you have to start over with your petition, but, I mean, maybe it shouldn't be the driving force, but...
I, I guess where I'm coming from with that, this would just be a personal frustration. I've been working on this for quite some years, and I apologize if I didn't get ahold of you guys, but I certainly tried many, many times. Would love to have had all these talks with you guys a long time before this. Sent letters, I've called, sent certified letters. I've attempted all of this many, multiple times. So for us, you know, the street is in really horrible shape, needs repairs years ago. And, you know, for us, if this gets delayed, that's another year that we're paying for snow because we're having to do the repairs. Because there's some of the...
Thing is, I'm worked out.
...we just haven't done because we thought this was going to improve. I can feel the interest where you guys are coming from. I, we feel honestly, we're the largest portion of this, we're the largest portion of this as well. We're not, I mean, you can look at all the assessed values on our projects. We're, we're varying the largest frontage cost. Wouldn't take us pushers, but we're varying the largest frontage cost. So, that being said, I, I would love to compromise. I don't know how to do that without pushing this number down really. And I don't know who that costs, if it ends up costing us, you know, if it adds to the next cost, or if the county just absorbs that, I don't know. But I understand where you're coming from, but that's my side of it. You know, I've, I've done my due diligence, I feel, and trying to reach out to everybody on the street. I apologize if I did, but I believe I, I, I tried, so.
I think what we have is the county has to vote on whether to, to do this or not. That's what it's coming down to, right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, if we reject it and don't do it, it's, we won't ever come back to it, I don't think, so...
Yeah, and we're gonna have to absorb that $40,000 that we've already paid out. That's money that the county is obligated to pay, that we'll have to, we'll have to pay. We have a short-term note to cover the engineering as we currently stand. And if we go, do not go forward with it, we're gonna have to, the county will have to absorb that $40,000.
At, at public works and at the county, we don't search for these projects to do the agreement to us. Our position has always been, if somebody wants to do this, we'll work with you to make it happen, okay? Regardless of who comes, okay? Gary came to us and said, we, we want to try to do this project, and it was determined, I know y'all disagree, but it was determined, everybody, not just him, not just us, everybody involved, determined that the concrete section was for these to do, okay? And that's how it went forward. And now we're to the position where either we move forward with it or we don't. Just so you all know, you know, as it relates to how the county may vote, in Harold's opinion, the price that we have right now, it probably will not be any cheaper than that. The estimated price was $358,000, and I'll tell you right now, we were concerned that that was gonna be too low. We thought we'd come in a lot higher, and actually, the next higher bid was higher than that. So, you know, price-wise, if you're looking, you know, if you're looking long-term, my benefit property, I can assure you that this is probably the lowest it's gonna be. So think of that in, in your feelings, you know, how you, how you perceive it. We're not for, we're neutral in the whole thing. Like I said, if they want to do the project and the commission directs us to do that, then we'll do that. We'll make it happen and do it, you know, to the best benefit to the vote. I believe so, that's kind of where we stand.
So how many of y'all are in favor of doing it at this point? Just two?
I'm ready to be closed, public, public hearing.
Oh, second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm in favor of moving forward.
I am too.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Uh, yeah, that was just a general discussion, but, anyway.
I don't know, it's just one of the things I don't like about NIDs.
Yeah.
I, I agree. There's two sides to all that, and...
I think it's gonna be a great project for, for everybody when it's done. I just, I think there's just too much going on with it to, to move on with it. I don't know, I didn't sit at any of your office's home association meetings, or if y'all had any. And I've been at some of ours that we talked about doing NIDs, and that was what cut, coming to the forefront was, who's gonna pay what share, what's fair? And everybody's perception of what was fair was totally different, so. You know, you got the people at the front of the road, and these are gravel roads, so it's a little different. You got a lot more people driving on that road and throwing up dust on their house. So, you know, they were, they were forward a little more, so. I don't know, I just wish we'd have a lot more people on board with it. I saw seven out of 10, or seven out of 17, 10 out of 17 that signed it. Is that correct? And that's just property owners, so I would, I'd like to have seen a little more buy-in, so. I'll probably vote against it, but if y'all are for it, let's move forward, and... That's up to you all. Or you want to give them a week to try to work something out, but then you've got to change the petition, which I don't know why you can't just revise it, but.
You would have to go back through the petition process. So the petition has to be submitted, and then you have to allow seven days to pass or people withdraw their signatures, then you can approve the advisability, so, I mean.
Gotcha.
And then, then we would have to hold a new public hearing. So that's where the timing comes in. Even if you were able to very quickly get a new petition signed, you've got, you know, one week delay before you can actually advise, approve the advisability ordinance or order to move forward, then you've got at least 20 days notice for a new public hearing. So, I mean, you're talking at the best, a 30-day, a 30-day period before you could get to this point again. And I don't know if your bids would hold that long, but, I mean, if they would, then that's great, but.
The problem for the contractor, the way they bid it, they also, you know, not part of the bid, they don't bid time in that. I mean, it's just a cost per unit. But it assumes a certain amount of time to do the project, and as you compress that window, their ability to do that goes down. So you're really, you know, my advice would be, I would not want to, they'll just add another one.
And if the idea is to go ahead and extend it to those other homes down the road, then this bid is no good because you're going to have to go back to the drawing board on engineering and engineer the rest of the road to be paid.
No, it could increase, yeah, so. I hear what you're saying. It's just, we need to either move or not with the existing, so.
Do you just need a motion for the?
To approve the order.
I move that we approve an order directing the Randall Drive neighborhood improvements to be made.
I'll second. Do a roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Did you count what one? Tension's a little high in here, I'm trying to see what the vote was. I guess we're, do we got to sign this then? And then what else? Do we have contract that we got to sign?
The next thing is to award the bid.
Okay, I talked about it earlier, the contract. Let me get situated here. We had four bids on the project, and they ranged from $288,000 to $468,000, pretty big range, estimate was $358,000 plus. The low bidder is Stockman Construction in the amount of $288,576.28. Spoke with the contractor with the concern, with the spread between the next low, and they are, they are good with it and will honor that, and would like to move forward with the project. And we would recommend award of that amount to Stockman Construction. Is there any questions about the project?
No.
You got a contract?
Yep.
Okay, I don't need to sign those.
Do you remember from the Parkview Meadows project that we had delays and whatnot, and had to extend the note on that? We did put some provisions in that contract where if there is a delay that causes additional expense to the county, the contractor has to absorb that as a damage. So there is language in there to cover us on that.
I move that we award and sign the contract for the Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project to Stockman.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do we have anything else?
If I could go back to county payable this morning, we just found a review.
No, I got to go.
It was on the. So if I could, if county payable pending.
I move that we approve of county payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other? Yes.
We didn't, we weren't able to get it in on the last, before we went into recess, but I did want to talk to you about the stormwater work that we need to do on.
I'm going on vacation.
And Amanda, you saw the pictures that Larry sent you over the weekend, damages, that stormwater system through that does need to be replaced and soon. I met with CNPS this morning, and they are willing to start surveying on that this week in advance of getting a contract signed with them, but they do have. CNPS does have some flood study work that they have done in that subdivision recently for different properties, and have some data to be able to start on that. And like I said, they would be able to survey and get going on that this week. So I would just like a verbal approval from the commission to go ahead and negotiate a contract with CNPS, and we'll bring that to you next week. Just, just looking at some broad numbers, $10,000 or less was what they told me, $10,000 on the high side. So just so you can kind of be thinking about that. Cost-wise to do the project, I'm going to say the 50 to 75,000 range, but we won't really know until we get in and see what, what exactly we got to do. There may be some street profile change along with the stormwater work.
We have, like I've mentioned to you in emails over the weekend, we do have a water line that was in danger, that we've worked with water, our water company, and we've got it stabilized for now. So like I said, this one, we need to move on fairly quickly, just so we don't create more issues down the road.
Need any action from us?
No, just.
Just basically a blessing.
Yeah.
Unless you've got some concern about it, I'll move forward and bring you something next week.
Yeah, we'll have it back up to you. We just want to let you know that they are going to start surveying with whether it's coming in, they would like to get it done as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So if you don't fix it, the road will be gone next.
Well, if we lose that water line, what Dave Kemp told Larry Bishop, we won't have to worry about the road because the water line's set up first, it'll take out.
In case you're concerned, we did have money in our budget for miscellaneous stormwater work in the 803 and the 805. And Joyce put some numbers together for me, and I think it's in the $800,000 range, I don't know if that sounds about right. But it's substantial that we knew we were going to do some stormwater work, we didn't think it would be the result of these floods, but we had it in there because we know we have some work we need to do, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Don't you got anything else?
We've got 11:30 meeting, so.
I move we stay in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's rough.